Welcome to your city council with the mic on. Thanks folks for coming online. Welcome councilors. First thing we're going to do is turn off our cell phones. Then we're going to acknowledge the land where we're doing our work as we gather today. We respectfully acknowledge that the land on which the city of Hood River sits is the ancestral home of indigenous peoples. This includes Inez, Purse, Umatilla, Warm Springs, Yakima, and other tribes who stewarded this land for generations. We recognize the lasting impact of colonization and commit to working together for a more just and sustainable future. Let's stand and pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any agenda additions or corrections out here?
Uh, no, we do not. But I do want to note, I think, um, on public comment, I think we've got some folks on Zoom tonight.
Thank you.
So that brings us to business from the audience. Do we have any?
Uh, signatures on the piece of paper here in the room?
No, we have no one in person.
Do we have, what's the, what's the typical protocol here? Do we just ask folks to unmute and say hello online? Or how, how should we do this?
We have one person online.
Great.
All right.
Can you go ahead and unmute them and invite them to speak? Can you hear me online? Person whose name I don't know. I'm sorry. I hear maybe it's Jody Bear. Is that right?
Yeah. Can, can you hear me?
I hear you now, Jody. Yes. Go ahead. Tell us what you'd like us to know, please.
Yeah. So Jody Bear, I live at fifteen oh nine Taylor in Hood River. And I want, I had submitted some written comments today on the five-year landscape maintenance contract. That's my understanding that, uh, Public Works is looking at that contract right now. And I just wanted to address two comments that were raised at the last council meeting on this discussion. Uh, the first, by the council group. And the first one was on costs. And when you are considering costs, I just want to emphasize that you consider long-term costs as well as the specific costs that will be shown in, in the, you know, the five-year contract or the annual maintenance con, costs. Because there are, um, costs associated when we are actually applying any kind of chemicals to the land. And the second was, uh, a comparison that was made between big ag and, um, I think like small scale land maintenance or care. And I just wanted to emphasize there that, um, even though I recognize that we're living in a time that is, uh, on the political agenda of the country is very, uh, concerning and disempowering for many. That we need to remember that every decision that each one of us makes every day has the potential for great and like the beginning of great and lasting changes. And that even though we have a pretty small footprint in the city of Hood River, when we also, the city of Hood River has a lot of, um, because we're small, we have the opportunity to make changes that larger cities, it's more difficult for them to make change. And when we make changes in the city of Hood River, we empower other cities of our size to do similar things. And, um, so the decisions that you all have in front of you, uh, can, you can make significant, long-lasting, sustainable choices for not only this generation, but future generations to come. So, uh, thank you for considering those two items and for your time to listen to me tonight.
Thank you, Jody. It looked like maybe we did have someone who had signed up in the room.
No, we don't.
We know we don't. Okay. Uh, is there anyone else online?
There is not.
Great. Thank you. That concludes the public comment section of the business from the audience. We now have a presentation from the OLCC if I'm correct.
This is your microphone. Thank you. Is it on? Hi there. I have a real brief presentation here. So my name is Chris Luhon and I'm a regulatory specialist with the OLCC. I am your area district, uh, liquor inspector. It's a regulatory specialist slash liquor inspector. So my, my, uh, focus is alcohol. I operate, um, my area is, spans from Wasco County, the border of Wasco County, north and south, Hood River County, all the way to Troutdale, essentially have the entire gorge. Um, and I operate, my focus of compliance is compliance through education. Our mission, OLCC oversees, oversees access to alcohol, cannabis products in Oregon through education, regulation, and distilled spirits distribution. Our aim is to protect the public agency, public health, safety while supporting responsible businesses and providing funding for local and state agencies. OLCC re, receives revenues from distilled spirits, licenses, fees, and fines, server education fees, and taxes on malt beverages and wines, known as privileged tax. OLCC utilizes the revenues to administer the distilled spirits program and a portion of public safety administrative programs. OLCC monthly allocates liquor revenue to cities, counties, state general fund, mental health alcoholism, drug services, and city and county revenue. On a local level, for instance, in twelve twenty-four, December of last year, the county of Hood River with a population of twenty thousand, twenty-three thousand eight ninety-four was provided an amount of sixteen thousand eight hundred and sixty-four dollars seventy-nine cents. The city of Cascade Locks with a population of thirteen ninety-nine was provided an amount of two, two thousand seven hundred and eighty-two dollars thirty-four cents. And the city of Hood River with a population of eight thousand three hundred and seventy-eight was provided an amount of sixteen thousand six hundred and, six hundred and two dollars and twenty-four cents. On the local impact, OLCC, myself, I address alcohol-related public health concerns by educating, investigating, documenting through verbal instruction and violations on any establishment that has a liquor, liquor, a valid liquor license. Small, small business support. I offer trainings and education on responsible serving and selling of alcohol, to include minors. I work closely with both city and county law enforcement agencies as well as the county prevention department. We offer free classes to us, to businesses and their, to business owners and their employees to include proper ID checking, selling to visibly intoxicated persons, and not serving to minors, prohibited conduct, and other nefarious activities. As a local resident, I have an interest in the community. I take great pride in helping to assist in making this a safe place to live, work, and play. I review and investigate Deweys as well as other crimes to provide education to businesses that have an association with the alleged suspect. Once a business is named, I investigate, I investigate and educate the licensee to my findings. I essentially help out, that's my script, my, the off script. I essentially help out most businesses to become more successful uh, by educating them on our current laws, our processes, and helping them to, by helping them to become successful, I'm more successful. The OLCC is more successful. I also work with the city or the county. They call me when they get their approved licenses or should a new business come in to, um, come into purview. They want, they want to know about it. Many times I operate within the city or the county. Um, this is, I'm on the alcohol side. I have, uh, my newly appointed manager. This is Gary Wright. Uh, I'll ask him to come say a few words. He was a, uh, Hood River marijuana inspector. He is now came, come to the better side of life and he is now in alcohol. And he will, uh, he'll give a little briefing on the marijuana side.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Gary Wright. Um, as Chris stated, I started with the OLCC in twenty seventeen, which I was, uh, marijuana inspector. I've moved up into the statewide compliance technician for the marijuana program, uh, to where I manage all the, the legal information, rules, interpretations for the state. Uh, I have, I'm still doing that role as well. I was just appointed as the alcohol manager for the Portland metro region, which covers from basically Kristen's district, uh, down towards Salem, all the way to the, the coast, Astoria and, and that. Uh, thank you for having us. Uh, just so y'all know, I came from a small town. When I say small town, I'm talking thirty-two hundred people in Southern Illinois. So I understand the small town vibe, what it means to live with your partner agencies, people that you work with and see every day. So I, I, I appreciate this time to come meet you all. Uh, I think probably over the last few years, uh, especially after marijuana, you probably haven't seen as many OLCC inspectors, especially on the marijuana side is. But I am very thankful that you have Chris. Chris has been a phenomenal employee. She, I know she lives here. I know she cares about our licensees and their success. But I also want to offer you just anytime that you need anything. If you need me to come back, have just more one-on-one types of comfort, conversations with, you know, program basics, anything like that, please feel free to, to give me a call. You can reach out to Chris. I'll make sure that she has my information for everyone. Um, but I, we had, uh, received, Abigail had sent us some questions. And quite honestly, some of those, if, if we could defer some of those to maybe, uh, to where we can have more time, I would appreciate that because when I was reading through them, there, there's a lot of technical information that I would really like to, to pass along. And just a few minute presentation this evening just really isn't, uh, the, the venue for it. So I would just like to, you know, extend that anytime. I, doesn't bother me to, to come out. I love driving. So, uh, I'm, I'm here for any, anything that you all would, would like. So thank you for the opportunity to come up and speak with us. Anyone has just a quick, brief question that I could help answer?
Counsel?
Uh, maybe, maybe for you, maybe for Chris. Uh, you know, first of all, I have my OLCC service permit. Um, I know a lot of people that work in the industry that I don't work in the industry myself. Heard nothing but good things, positive reviews of, uh, how everything works in the community. So I'm happy to, to meet you face to face. I'm just wondering if you've noticed any positive or negative trends in this community related to violations or, or anything that stands out to you compared to other communities that you've worked in?
I know that I generally believe that the residents, the business owners of Hood River really want to do a good job. Once they're educated, once they realize that, hey, a violation potentially may have occurred, something may have happened, whether in or out of their control, they genuinely want to make corrections. And I appreciate that. I will address one of your council members right here, Amanda. She owns a volcanic bottle shop. She calls me whenever she needs to bounce anything off me, you know? People call me because they want R O L C C, my input, uh, not myself, but, oh, as the representative. They want my input to help them become more successful. And by our work in that relationship, I, I think it's fantastic. And I love the fact that people generally really want to do a really good job. I may have one or two outliers, but it's not Portland. This is, it's a great community. And I, I really see a very positive impact. Uh, my biggest passion, again, like I said, is Dewey's because we all live here. I want to get home at night. I want you all to get home at night. And I, if I see something, I'll call, you know, Hood River PD, Hood River County while I'm out because you, you all need to get home. So I think there's a lot of very positive things in the community and people will call me. Chris, I suspect this or that, if I'm out working at night, they'll call me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think Gladys was.
Gladys. Yeah. Anna and then Gladys.
Um, okay. I have a couple of quick questions. I think this one's easy. And if you want to defer them till later, that's okay too. And the first one is, um, you guys don't do anything with Silas Seben, right? Is that a different department?
I'm sorry, with?
Silas.
Simon?
Yeah.
Yes, that, that is, that is another state agency that, that handles that.
Okay. I was just curious about that. And then on the licensing side, um, and I, I'm one of the newer council members. So forgive me if this is kind of a silly question, but we've already had a couple of, um, agenda items where OLCC permits are being presented for city council. Um, I think it's recommendation because we don't actually approve the permits. We just, we either, we recommend them to you, correct?
That is correct.
Um, and then ultimately the decision for Um, and then ultimately the decision for approval of an OLCC license or permit is, is, and these are for establishments are, are made by you, by you.
That is correct. On the form, it specifically states um local government recommendation.
Okay. And so um as a newer council member, what, and what factors should we be considering when we're recommending a, a applicant for approval?
I'm going to defer some of that because it's more of a licensing aspect, which I am not in licensing. I'm in enforcement. Do you want to?
Yeah.
Say anything?
I think from the, from our standpoint, I think any information that you can relay to us is, is the best course, whether good or bad. I, I think that whatever type of open communication that those channels that we can keep open and, and, and discuss between if, then I, I think that we do that, but uh we do our due diligence, our licensing department, a lot of experienced folks that have been, you know, in, in that sort of job role for many, many years. So, so they understand, they can kind of read between the lines, but I would just say, if you really have a question, then let's just start those lines of communication. And, you know, we'll, we'll provide either myself or Chris, just provide information that we can.
Especially if you have a concern, if I'm, I may interject, if you have a concern, I'd really appreciate that. I'd, that's more welcome than like, oh, these people are going, it's great. I think it's going to be a great business. But if there's a question, that way we clear the lines.
And I mean, something as well, if, if this is a concern that's coming from the community, you have them come to our, to our website. We have complaint forms that are all online. They can remain anonymous and they can just pass along information. So, and that's just, you know, on our website, that's for every program, whether it's marijuana or alcohol. The public can submit anonymous complaints to us and then I evaluate those. And if it needs assignment, then we, then we send that out to an inspector and they look into it.
Can I have a quick follow-up? Just, just for clarification though, this is for new applicants, not existing applicants.
Okay.
And um
Well, it could even, I mean, sometimes with business, right? Like something new, people have opinions. That, I mean, that's the great thing about, you know, smaller veteran communities is, you know, the people may have an opinion on it that they want to pass along even to us. So that's why I always say like, like, let, let me evaluate it once it comes to us. And then if I think that there's something that we need to, to talk more about, then absolutely.
And in that respect, you can get ahold of me.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, if it's a new business in that manner, you please get ahold of me and I will, I'll work with you. You're welcome.
Gladys.
Can you all hear me?
Yes, now.
Okay, I, I keep getting a message that the host is on, is muting me. So if I go off, please know it is uh not my intention. Um, so I just want to ask a little follow-up question to what one of my peers just asked around. If there is a business, for whatever reason, that has received several complaints, how are we as a governing body informed of that, especially if it is a brand, I mean, uh renewing a license, for example, there are businesses that do have to renew and how do we know that those complaints that have been addressed by potential community members have been addressed to the point where it's okay for us to to pass or to approve their license?
Sure. I think the communication, just like, I, I hope y'all are understanding. My theme here is I'm new to this position, but I've, I've worked for the agency and for a while, understand state, local government. Communication, uh if, if you have follow-up and we can pass along information as an agency, we absolutely will. Um, whether that's me coordinating it through Chris or me coming and inspect and, and talking to y'all directly or or you give me a call, we exchange emails. So um there's certain information that we can disclose. Some information can be done through public records requests through our agency. And, and any, say it's a specific location, you use the city body, want that information, we'll direct you on how to get it and, and our communications division will get that information to you.
And you can always call me.
But how is that? And I, and I was the one who sent like a eleven different questions, uh would love to have an understanding of when you all think that those could be addressed. I recognize that you're new. I appreciate you both being here. But I abstain all the licenses that come through and that's not by fault of the business owner or you in any way. I just, we don't have enough transportation to ensure that folks are, are getting home safely. And so this to me is really important.
I agree.
How is that informa- is that information given to Neil, for example, our, our chief of police? Is that information given to Abigail, our city manager? How would we as a governing body be aware of that? Um, is it a report? You know, do you all, like, help me understand that process?
We don't provide, once I, we receive a complaint or there's an issue, I do my due diligence, I pass it on to Gary. Gary does his work and it gets phoned up. We don't process our reports to the city or they provide their reports to me. I will follow up on a Dewey from Neil, Neil's team and then, I'm sorry, the chief's team, and then I will go through and process and then it goes through my channels. We do not provide our, our reports or information to the city, nor the county. That, that might
It's, yeah, with, with the state agency, it's, it's based on request. So if we set up those lines of communication that, you know, we can get you certain reports, we'll, we'll set up the, the specific request type and help you through that process. So it is streamlined so that when you do have an issue, it's, it's quick that we can get you the information.
Go ahead, Gladys.
Sorry, it just takes a little bit to get access to uh unmute myself. So earlier there was a mention around education for businesses. Is that something that takes place on a yearly basis and all businesses attend? Like, can you help me understand that process?
So I work with the crime prevention department, the county, and they typically conduct, they were, as of last year, we were doing a uh, we were doing us a ID checking class and it was a bar training. I called it a bar training. They had their own specific John words for it and it would happen twice a year. They come invite every single business in Hood River County from Cascade Lock, everyone. Everyone, everyone's invited and it's unfortunate that we provide such a service several times a year with breakfast, drinks, not alcohol, whatever. Um, and prizes, they would give prizes and the great prizes. And sometimes the turnout, the city PD was there, the Indian tribe was here and there was just many people uh attended and we, our participants, sometimes ten people, six people, sometimes we got thirty people. It, it just depended. You know, we can provide the information to the businesses, but it's up to them to pick up the torch and run with it. And whenever I get a Dewey, uh just so you know, um I go to that respective business. I'm like, hey, let's set up a bar training. Let's educate your bartenders and your people so that they know what to look for. What, what is it we're, we're doing, we're failing, we're, you know, how did we miss this guy? You know, blowing a point two oh, how did we miss that? Well, you probably didn't look is probably half the case or you didn't care. So there's a lot of things that happen or he took something else. But if you educate them, we say, hey, you know what? They can come in with one drink and they can take one pill and it'll send them over the edge. Educate. So, but we can't make the business
Right. Is there, and I recognize you can't make a business do so, but is there, are there other ways that you're all thinking about potentially incentivizing some of those businesses just to make sure that everyone is receiving the same consistent information? I'm not sure what sort of change, uh state or federal changes have taken place. So how do you how would you inform those businesses of that through an email, through this training?
I personally inform them. The county personally goes out to all the businesses. So there's, there's not really a lack of communication.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I have one more question. Um, it's on the website that you guys are considering extending a fifty cent per bottle surcharge um on distilled spirits, which would, is expected to generate an additional like thirty-nine million dollars for the state um for the twenty-twenty-five to twenty-twenty-seven by annual. Um, and I'm wondering if that money goes to the same breakdown that you had mentioned earlier of cities, counties, um state fund. That, if that gets extended or if you guys have any information or want us to consider anything on that. And then also if you could um just clarify the, the funds that go to this incorporated cities versus city revenue sharing. The numbers, the sixteen thousand you quoted earlier that goes to the city of Hood River um or went to the city of Hood River for December of twenty-twenty-four, was that part of the city revenue sharing or is that part of the incorporated? Or is this a good question?
That I don't, that I don't know. Um, I, I got it from the website and it's, and it, you can go onto the website and it will, it will demonstrate every single where those monies are being allocated. So I
Yeah, you know, a lot of the, the allocation is legislated, tied legislatively. So um, and I don't have that much experience on the alcohol side to be able to give you a definite answer right now. Uh, but, but please, I'll, I'll work on getting that information for you.
Thank you. I can email it to you.
And I believe, and I believe it, sorry. I believe it goes to the, it's all emanates to the general fund. And then it's just
Thanks, you guys. Appreciate it. We have a robust business here in our community and you're keeping the, keeping the guardrails up is key to it, it, it continuing on. Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time. We appreciate it.
That takes us to the consent agenda. We have the minutes in front of us. I would entertain a motion.
I move to per, well, nice job, Ben. I moved to approve the consent agenda.
Moved by Ben Mitchell?
All second.
Seconded by Gladys online. Sorry, looking around. Uh, any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Chair votes aye, motion passes. Action item, Mariposa Village.
Thank you, mayor and councilors. I have a number of uh items for you today. So I'm just going to plant myself here for the rest of the meeting. Uh, and the first one I hope you find is a fun one. You might remember that we um we received a recommendation on the name of the um, of the development, which Mariposa Village. And before you, you have a, we sent back the question of the street and the park to that same working group. Uh, so you have a couple of options before you in your packet tonight. So you can see that the um one is a recommendation to just kind of thumbs up, thumbs down. The um name of the park, the recommendation was Pato Park. Um, and then the street, uh the working group brought you two recommendations. And so however you wish to decide that, probably by one person just making a motion and then they're either uh living or dying on, on the motion. Um, or you know, I've probably got a quarter in my pocket if you want to flip that instead. So, um, but I'll just open it up for questions and, and thoughts. Um, and I believe Councilor Stupino was on the um naming group, so he probably has more insight into this process than I do.
Please carry on. Um, yeah, so I mean, I guess the impetus of this was really, you know, if we're working on naming it Mariposa and we're talking about the park and we're talking about the streets, maybe the same people should sort of take that into consideration. And I think the original uh discussions, that, that, that sort of entered everybody's mind is like, you know, well, it'd be strange to have a completely, completely arbitrary street and, and whatnot. So um our direction at the time was really that we would make the decision to do that. The newer councilors, I recommended and everybody agreed, we could bring it back to that body that worked on naming Mariposa in, in uh in the first place and also work on the street names, uh park names, uh et cetera. So that kind of got us to this point. Uh, that working group involves all sorts of folks from the community. Um, and uh, yeah, I, I think it was uh, it was really uh Kevin LeBertie spearheading that sort of communication. And, you know, I'm, I'm happy that we got some output from that and uh not much to say other than that. Uh, I'm, you know, I think we've got the, the, the descriptions as to why in the packet as well, but uh Pato was in consideration for the, the original name, uh Mariposa went out. So that sort of was why Pato went to the park. Um, Coro was not in rec- uh being recommended for anything before, so that's a, that's a new one. So that's cool to see as well.
Thanks, Doug. Questions? I have a question. On the, on the page seventeen, the map, where's the park?
The park is, um, I think it's on the north part of the development. I remember it's on the
Uh, immediate south of the proposed street um to the uh eastern far side of the development. So I would maybe the
Along Rand.
Along Rand, adjacent to Rand, running from east to west, uh immediately south of the east-west street.
Great, thank you.
You can start at the end and make a motion.
Uh, I'll make a motion if no one else has any other input. Um, so uh, well, can we start with perhaps the park or do we want to? All right, my motion.
You're welcome to
Don't want to step on anybody's stuff here.
Hold on, hold on. Before we make, sorry, I, I had a question. I don't know if you all saw. Uh, I just want to make sure that Pato Park, that all of these names that we have before us, that they've all been vetted uh respectfully. So I think I brought this up at the last meeting and would just love a quick little update on that prior to uh voting.
Thank you, counselor. I know that uh when we were looking at naming the village, which eventually became Mariposa Village, uh Pato Park was one of the names considered and I believe it was discussed by the mayor's equity group um of uh whom I believe a couple, a, a couple of people representing indigenous um tribal members, uh communities were in attendance. So that is the only outreach that we did on that. And we did not consult crit fic or others, but we did run it by um, by the equity group.
And the original seeing, I'm trying to see if I have the original list as well.
Thank you.
Well, he's looking for that. Can I just ask a quick question?
Of course, you can ask a slow question.
Since there's two options, do we like, kind of get a feel for what everybody likes or do we just make a motion and then vote on it like?
Seems like there's a couple of ways to do that, in my opinion. Like, a shortcut is to make a motion for X and if we don't, if we want Y, then you vote no on that one. So that, that's a way. Or we can, I mean, you've seen me do sort of the thumb thing, like the folks have a preference, but I ju- just realized that uh sometimes people get the impression that once the motion's made, like the train is underway. No, like the motion is like, what, if you don't like it, it's like, I, I, I'm in fact going to vote against this because I prefer the other one. It's totally an honorable path. Thank you.
Also, right now, if one had strong feelings or another, this would be the time to advocate.
Yep.
I just think it might be good to just like, sorry, I was just saying it might be good to
I don't know, like we can make motions, but that doesn't like explain our choice to the community. I think that's a little bit, you know?
Yeah.
So another, sometimes what we do is I say, do you all have preferences? Let's start with Anna and we can kind of go through it. Or, or popcorn or whatever, there's a variety of ways. Jackie?
Can I, I just wanted to make a quick clarification because I was discussing this with Abigail, but um I had, I left out, so I had to sort of forgotten, but I did in fact reach out to Crit Fic um and a few other folks when Pato was being considered. I did not immediately hear back from those folks. And then once it was announced tomorrow, Posa was chosen, I did not pursue that further. Um, so the only folks we have in fact heard back from were members of the mayor's equity advisory council or a group, but we did reach out to a few other groups as well.
Thank you, Jackie.
Doug?
And, and the original sort of team, just to, you know, uh, Nchwana, Nextdoor, Columbia Cascade Housing Group, Columbia Housing Authority, MacAC, uh Engage Northwest, uh OHDC, Community Development Partners, that, that was sort of the representation that came up with Mariposa and subsequently uh started talking about the street and the park names.
I just want to make sure that we're being, you know, really mindful uh in, in my experience, when there is a Native American name that is being selected, that means that there's been you know, approval and that there could potentially be folks you know, approval and that there could potentially be folks that come out to bless um, such location that is being named as such. Uh, and just want to make sure that we are being sensitive to that.
Thank you, Gladys. You and I have had a similar conversation so many times about, you know, how many, how many folks is enough to consult with? Obviously, I don't represent all white people and, you know, vice versa, so it's we want to do our due diligence, but not be paralyzed or 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 uh, clueless.
Can we make a motion to name the park Pato Park um, with the contingency that we do hear back from the groups that we reached out and they approve, or does that work?
That's a motion right there. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Gladys, so moved by Amanda, second by Gladys to to uh, choose a name, but with, we're going to do some follow up and and if and if we uncover uh, some concerns, we we reserve the right to kind of circle back. So that's the motion. Any discussion on that?
Would that bring it back to council again?
Yeah. Discussion, Anna?
Um, that would bring it back to council in the event that there was concern from, if we didn't get a blessing, but otherwise, it would, it would, if if um, if our indigenous community consented to the name, then we would be okay moving forward with that name. Is that?
That's what I'm hearing. Amanda has that?
I think that's great, and I think if it's our intent to honor our indigenous neighbors and community by naming this park, and that's, I think that that's the intent. Um, I'm I'm for that. I think it's a great motion.
Right. Uh, further discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye, motion passes. All right, we got a park name. Pending some staff follow up. Now we need a road.
May I make a motion to name the road Mariposa, um, is it lane?
Avenue.
Avenue, Mariposa Avenue, um, just for the sake of clarity.
Moved, moved by Cavalier.
Second.
Second by Mitchell. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay, just because I like Quorum or but.
Okay, so Stapina votes nay, let the record show. Uh, further nays, Amanda says nay, so uh, to to review the bidding, we have two nays, we have one, two, three, four ayes. Chair votes aye, motion passes. Great, thank you, guys. We don't, we don't do that very often to like, to have the like friendly nay or whatever, but I I I think it's an honorable way to like, we're trying to decide, and and if you prefer something, you say, you know, I'm not gonna. Great, okay, uh, so that is, that has been accomplished. Super.
Great.
Discussion items, Abigail.
Yes, I brought you, uh, at your last meeting, you talked about um, sanctuary city and uh, just the state of our world right now and wanting to um, review the resolution from twenty seventeen, so that's in your packet. I also included the resolution from twenty twenty that uh, council adopted shortly after the murder of George Floyd, um, also for context. Uh, so giving you a couple of different options, one is you could simply choose to uh, leave things as they are, you could reaffirm these resolutions, if you look at them and say, this still holds true. Um, could choose to make a different kind of statement or a different resolution, so looking for direction from all of you on um, thoughts that you might have. So before you start your conversation, I just want to give you a little bit of background or or kind of things that are happening now. Um, the first is, of course, you know that Oregon is a sanctuary state. So as a city, we don't have an action to take as a sanctuary city, like legally or or as a matter of policy. Um, and I believe the state has stood fast with that. I haven't seen if there's been any action to affirm or change that, but that is still um, valid. And then, um, I think you've probably seen, if you follow our social media, we've been putting some educational items out, um, just letting it community know. And then, uh, I think two weeks ago, we had a police officer, um, Officer of Pluto was on um, Radio Tierra with um, with Nubia Contreras, um, explaining just uh, rights and responsibilities and kind of what the police will do. I think another officer either has done that or will um, again do that um, on Radio Tierra in Spanish, so trying to reach out to the community, and then I know um, members of council have also been reaching out and connecting with folks, so really want folks to understand um, how law enforcement does not actively cooperate with um, immigration or ICE. Um, but there are other factors in our community that folks know their rights and who to contact and how to make a plan.
Thanks, Ab.
Thank you, Mayor.
I'll add to that, uh, you can see this, the inclusive city resolution from twenty seventeen, my signature, uh, uh, racial and social equity, Mayor Kate's signature from twenty twenty. Um, I headline news today on the radio is the threat from the federal government to withhold uh, funds from sanctuary states and cities, and at the time in twenty seventeen, very much top of mind, like, do you stick your head up and get it cleaved off by the lawnmower, or do you kind of be prudently kind of tentative and not and not, you know, risk, and that was, you know, it wasn't like we didn't want to make a statement, but we wanted to not be foolhardy, and just right now, when we're talking about the kinds of funding we have for the bridge, for uh, some affordable housing projects, for, you know, a variety of things that flow to us from the state or the federal, like, there's the like, we can't afford to take a stand argument is is as live as ever, so I I went to a Know Your Rights presentation this week and somebody declared we were a sanctuary city, and I was like, well, you know, like, it's not just parsing words, so uh, that is context for why that resolution from twenty seventeen reads the way it does. Doug?
Well, you know, as as it is written in twenty twenty and twenty seventeen, et cetera, would we not be beholden to that sort of language? Which does call out that we offer sanctuary.
So, good, good conversation. So, I mean, in twenty seventeen, we passed this, and the S word does not appear. Right?
Mm-hmm, but in twenty twenty, it did. A place of sanctuary.
Uh, in twenty seventeen, it does.
Yeah, it doesn't even mentions the ORS.
In in twenty seventeen, it says we will continue to be a place of sanctuary.
Yeah.
But in, but in, but in inclusive city, right? Thank you, Ben, correction.
Yeah.
The the word sanctuary is in there, we are a place of sanctuary, but.
It's not, that doesn't say sanctuary city, and I'm not aware of when the law passed that made Oregon a sanctuary state.
We do know this, Abigail.
Oh, I want to say it was like nineteen eighty seven.
Okay, so that predates, obviously.
But then, something else happened in twenty.
I think it was in twenty twenty one that the law was amended, and I'm going to say strengthened. So it's been around for a long time, but I think it was recently refreshed. Um, I did go back and read the minutes from um, the conversation when council did adopt this back in twenty seventeen. It looked like they actually had a number of conversations, starting in November of twenty sixteen after the election, all the way up to um, when they passed this resolution in twenty seventeen, and um, they were very intentional about that language of a city of sanctuary, or you know, to not say those were sanctuary city as a phrase, but to include um, of sanctuary was um, selected, and and at that time, council had significant community input um, on the language that was written.
And I mean, now it, we're in the like, parsing words world, like, what is it? I mean, what is, what would it have? Had we said a sanctuary city resolution, what would that have meant? I mean, I almost kind of want to call the chief up, like, does, does that mean that we ask our police officers to not enforce things, or like, what 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 do we mean, right? I mean?
Well, resolution is not binding law. I mean, you have the state law, uh, that's what we're following, and if the chief has any more to add to that, but um, a resolution is really a statement of the council's values and guidance for um, for staff and for the future councils, but it is not.
And so to be clear about that, the thing.
Not to be enforced.
The thing that guides the chief's officers to not collab, cooperate with ICE is Oregon Sanctuary Law.
Yes.
Yeah, Anna, thanks.
Yeah.
Chief saying, chief says yes.
I reviewed um, one eighty one, eight twenty, ORS one eighty one, A, eight twenty, and paragraph two says, a lot, law enforcement agency may not use monies, equipment, or personnel for the purpose of enforcing federal immigration laws. That's exactly what we incorporated, or what was incorporated into this resolution, and I think that's the actual language that you're, that uh, Chief Paul sees.
And our resolution says we endorse that ORS.
That is the current law today. I I was, I wanted to know what it said when when I read through this. I I want to say that I really appreciate the um, foresight of our city council and our leadership and staff of putting this together in twenty seventeen and the one in twenty twenty. I think it's as relevant today as it was back then, and I think that there's um, it's, it's absolutely, you know, something that we just reaffirm. I I think it's, it's valuable and important and and um, I get, it was well crafted.
Thank you for the kind words. Thank you, Gladys.
Yeah, I appreciate um, this first resolution that we're looking at. The only comment or edit that I would make is in the second paragraph where it says, we will not turn our back on the men and women from other countries, but that we strike men and women and just say people from other countries. Uh, as I was looking at the second resolution, you know, gender isn't exactly identified and uh, that's really the only edit I have for the twenty seventeen oh two.
I'm looking around every, any anybody that part burned about making that men and women change? I've seen, I see a majority of okays on that, so thank you, Gladys, for highlighting that.
Well, for making edits.
Yep, 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 yep.
Um, in that same second paragraph, in the sentence that says, um, we endorse ORS one eight one A, eight twenty, the state law which forbids local jurisdictions from using their resources to enforce immigration law, I should say, enforce federal immigration law, to be specific.
So adding the word federal after the word enforce, I'm looking for not head nods. I got head nods on that. And just at context, I remember specifically the next sentence, when I, one version of this said, our police are busy keeping our residents safe. It used to say from criminals, and somebody said, no, we should say crime, so I mean, there's lots of nuance in in every, in every phrase. And I I guess, I guess fundamentally, there's a question, are we gonna, I mean, we could all go home and 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 have tea, and this would be enforced, like, this, we already decided, so are we gonna, like, do we want to lift it up or tonight, or 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 not, or I I I don't feel strongly one way or the other, but just that occurs to me, like, we, we don't have to do anything, it's already there, unless it certainly seems timely to remind ourselves, go ahead, Doug.
Yeah, and I I think that, you know, I think that's in my mind, I want to get to is not necessarily having to wordsmith this completely or anything like that, or rewrite it, I I think it's good the way it's written, but how do we make sure people know that it exists, is is sort of my thing, right? So um, when you said elevate, that's, that's what I would think, is we could remind people that we have this that we're, that that the current council had a discussion about it, supports it, reiterates it, et et cetera. I think that's the important thing.
Ben?
I believe there was a social media post to that points about that, correct? I'm just curious, is the um, we use the term elevate, what do we mean? Because we've definitely, like, done that at least externally via social media. Um, so what what else are we talking about, I guess, here?
I think from my thought today was when I wrote your packet, kind of your options, I I used the word reaffirm, like, if you wanted to take a motion today to say we affirm resolution twenty seventeen, and then um, I think I can work with our um, community engagement coordinator to, you know, put out a statement that said council reaffirmed this last night, or whatever that would look like. So that would, I say that simply as a, um, because then you're taking an official action, right, and taking a vote, and you're all on the record as reaffirming it, as opposed, you know, you could also choose to just say, it looks good, continue to publicize.
Anna?
I appreciate the idea of reaffirming, but I, in my notes, I I was like, what are we actually doing to uphold these resolutions? And um, in the second one, it actually says, um, what I wrote, what are we doing and or what can the city do to eliminate instances of bias and social racial equity barriers, or to educate and train our staff, volunteers, and elected officials about the history of racism in the US, Oregon, and Hood River? And I just wrote down, like, actions speak louder than words, and we've actually, we have these resolutions, and I think that they're good resolutions, but I I'd like to know since twenty seventeen and since twenty twenty, what are we, what are we doing or what have we done, and then you know, more specifically, what can we do moving forward?
And I want you to make sure that you saw gigantic thumbs up from Council.
Lots of thumbs up from from the Zoom screen, yeah.
Uh, a couple of things, you know, I I was not here in twenty seventeen or twenty twenty, but some things I know of that have happened um, in the last couple of years. We have started a um, internal DEI committee that uh, has representation from every department, and they have set out a work plan. Um, if you were on council last year, you have seen um, a first draft of that, um, and we got some feedback from you, really focused on what are the things that we can do um, internally? Um, that kind of small steps, uh, so some of the things have been uh, working on a language access plan. What are all of our vital forms, and are they all available in at least English and Spanish? Um, and then doing some education. Uh, one more outward thing we're doing coming up is, uh, you've all received an invitation for a training with Lou Rajah. Soon to speaking, um, we're going to do all staff, and county is joining on this, so that all of their staff are also training, so we've been working on that piece. And then I think our third piece to come is uh, starting to look outward. So this has been really focused on what are staff doing and and what are the city services, and now um, as part of your work plan, I think we saw to amplify or elevate the work being done by others in our team, so that's um, that's coming forward. Did I get most of it? Uh,
uh, Jackie Van Croy is the um, the facilitator of the internal group, so
yeah, yield to her if she has additional comments.
I would just, I I would just add as well that even through the creation of the staff um, committee, uh, that opened up a lot of conversations that hadn't been having before about why is this important, why are we doing this? Um, and the group itself has been doing a lot of research and writing and having a lot of discussions as well as to how um, we can implement different programs and actions, and so um, while the group is also working on these concrete actions for the whole city, uh, the work that it took to create this group and bring everyone together to start thinking in and of itself is the work as well.
Thank you, Jackie.
Okay.
So, so procedurally, if we wanted to reaffirm, um, sounds like we could make a motion to do that, but procedurally, what, if we wanted to make corrections, as we just noted, does that require passing a new resolution? Can we revise a resolution?
Thank you for the question, and I think that might be a question for the city attorney, so um, our normal city attorney is out today, Dan Karen, so we have Chris Kreen joining us, so Chris, you might not know everybody on uh, council here, thank you for joining us tonight. Um, what are the mechanics of, like, can we make some small wording changes to a resolution that was passed in twenty seventeen? Would we need to adopt that as a new uh, new resolution? I'm not sure what comes as like a Scrivener's error and what's uh, substantial.
Right, um, thank you, um, Abigail, and thank you, council, uh, for the opportunity to work with you tonight. If you're going to yeah, it seems to me I have two choices, you could either ratify the twenty seventeen resolution, which would be effectively re adopting it. Um, or if you want to make changes to it, um, you should go ahead and make those changes and then adopt a new resolution as of twenty twenty five, that expresses, I mean, keep in mind, the purpose of a resolution is one of two things, either to direct staff to take a particular action, an administrative resolution, or in this case, it's to express the will of the council or the um, values of the council on a particular issue, in this case, um, immigration uh, issues. So if this would be a statement of the current council, the twenty, in twenty twenty five on those issues, and again, you can either adopt your own resolution or ratify the twenty seventeen resolution, but if you want to modify the twenty seventeen resolution, it should be re adopted as a current resolution.
And you could make a motion to direct staff to bring that back to you at the next meeting.
Yeah, absolutely, that's correct.
And that might be nice from a symbolic point of view.
Gladys?
Um, Anna, I loved everything that you said. How are we as a council, as a council, holding ourselves and our staff accountable to make sure that we are making progress? Um, so for the, just my suggestion, definitely update some of the language in twenty seventeen, and I'll add that we also have, you know, the mayor's advisory group, uh, which I think, Paul, at that time, it was coming to fruition, I can't remember a hundred percent. Uh, so I feel like that's been an accomplishment that we should all be proud of. What was that?
That's a good point, sorry.
Um, but that we mandate some sort of annual report on the progress that's being made towards equity. I recall during our work plan meetings that we were also talking about being very intentional with creating a budget. with creating a budget line item that would be specific for DEI initiatives internally and externally. So that's maybe something that we would consider and add into our second resolution. And those are, in addition to that, I think there's already something in there about training, but that, that's something we could add in there as well, which is what Abigail mentioned, that we are currently practicing now. So maybe just an annual report of here's the updates specifically around DEI initiatives. And that could be the broad piece that just covers everything I've just reviewed.
And crafting this new resolution, in terms of language, would we quote some of the old, you know, resolution or resolution number? I guess what I'm saying is I don't necessarily want people to think like, oh, you're just doing this now? Like you didn't have this before, you know what I mean? Like make it known that this is a revampment of a document that was largely what was there before and that this isn't like, oh, maybe we should do something about, you know, equity now in the year 2025.
I'm curious, Chris, can we do a revised and restated resolution?
Sorry, I pushed the wrong button. It's funny, I was just going to jump in and say that what was just suggested would be easy to do in the text of a resolution. You'd start by saying, whereas in 2017, the city council approved resolution X stating this. And then whereas the current city council wishes to reaffirm and update and, you know, re adopt those values again in 2025, we just lay it out in narrative form in the resolution.
Great, that's what exactly I was looking for, thank you.
And then keep going, Chris. So then we wanted to have more modern gender language, would we have a whereas or?
Yeah, well, we'd have to massage the language a little bit. I don't have it, well, maybe I do have it in front of me, but we can massage the language to incorporate any edits, updates that you want to the 2017 resolution. But my point was just to underscore what was just suggested, that this is not new in the city of Hood River. This is the latest iteration of something that people at Hood River have believed for a number of years now.
Thank you.
Yeah, in fact, the 2020 resolution references the 2017 resolution.
Yep, we can put all that history in a resolution and then update the actual operative language, however you want it to read.
So I was going to say, I'm here, I think I'm hearing that the 2017 has good bones. And if we could just change some of it, I can work with Chris and, and we can bring you back some, just some updated language. Unless you think there's more substantial changes that want, that you want to have happen.
And that's exactly what I was going to ask. I think, I think the, the act of reaffirming this is, is what we're trying to do here. So it sounds like you probably wouldn't need a motion for that. You just need direction and then we can come back, okay? I'm comfortable with that.
Amanda.
I like this, but knowing that we're going to be tweaking it just a little bit, is there, could we have like a period of time where like we could sit down? And if there's any other little tweaks, we could send them to you and they have a deadline by like, you need to get these to me by a certain date.
By next Wednesday.
Just for the, in the interest of context, like this is us choosing to stand up and hold our ground, which is excellent right up till the day when like the governor calls and says, whoops, all your highway funding's gone. Like, this is not a fully risk-free exercise.
Well, I think that's going to start with the state, right? So it will cascade down to us and we'll have to make that decision. But for right now, we do have the state law to abide by. Whether we want to be a sanctuary city, quote unquote, or not, the state is saying. The state is saying, state of Oregon is no longer going to do that. I think we have a decision.
Agreed.
I know.
Amanda.
I agree with that, and I'm not willing to roll over for a potential threat of taking away money for people's rights, like human rights is not negotiable for me. So since it's not even a real threat, I don't think we should really worry about that at this point.
Yeah.
Agreed.
Administration's going to do what it wants to anyway, and I don't think we need to be cowards about what may or may not happen. So I'm done.
All right, that's majority. Thank you.
Great, thank you all. So if you could get comments and thoughts to me, like say by Wednesday, end of day next week, then I will try to return something back to you Friday, Saturday, just to give us a little bit of time. And if I have outstanding questions, I, if you feel like I have enough direction, I can come back to you with a fully formed resolution for your consideration next time. If questions do come up, then we can have another, you know, you're welcome to have more discussion. But I feel like I've got a path.
So that's on the 2017 resolution and the 2020, is that where we are, people?
I took that as a 2017 resolution. Were there comments, thoughts on 2020?
I, I just think that they should both be, you know.
I haven't find them, I think that them is paired together.
Yeah.
I'll include them both in the next packet.
Great, anything else y'all on this? Good conversation, thanks so much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Abigail. Fireworks.
It's me.
Now, truly, we're all chuckling, but I kid you not, I was in Glacier Bay, Alaska on July 3rd and Chris Longinetti, acting city manager, and I were on the phone because like the hillside was burning down and we're trying to figure this out and like, are we doing a government taking of the people who are fundraising? Like this is a whole thing and it's a lot easier in February than in July. So I've heard from some of you that we're, we're game to tackle this, but this is a real issue. And feels hypothetical in February, but remember the burn months.
Right, right, thank you, mayor. And just a, right now, our current practice is we have some criteria by which we make that decision, right? We like to say a red flag day, right? Is it hot? Is it dry? Is it windy? Are there fires nearby? You know, we use that criteria generally, but I have heard from some of you an interest in looking at just a flat out ban or, or closing the window in which we, or reducing the window in which we allow fireworks. So I wanted to bring this conversation to you early, just thinking of those groups that might do fundraising or might buy fireworks at this time of year for resale to get direction from you. So looking for your comments and thoughts, questions, direction. And then if you decide to change your current ordinance language, that would need to come back to you with a public hearing. So this, if, if you keep everything the same, then we're finished. If you have any changes, then we'll need to have additional meetings on this topic.
Anna.
Sorry, but nothing else to say. So I just double checked. Our city ordinance, the, the report states that we have sale of consumer fireworks is allowed only from June 23rd to July 7th. And then there's a citation to ORS 48127 for retailer sale of consumer fireworks. And it's from June 23rd to July 6th. I think our, our city ordinance is illegal because we allow, we sell for one day extra.
And it might be a type on my part, I'll double check.
No, I actually just checked the ORS, it does say the 6th. So if, if ours also allows for the 7th, then we would want to update that so that we're compliant with state law.
Or we could remove that and just refer to the ORS.
I would defer to Chris to confirm that, but I think that that's probably a good idea. And then I, I do just want to say that I think that there's, what's the old joke from The Simpsons of let's celebrate our company, country's independence by blowing up a small piece of it? I, I don't think that we really need fireworks anymore. And if there's a way that we can, you know, ensure the safety of our community and still celebrate, you know, different things. And I mentioned this idea to you, Abigail, maybe like we work with the Lions and see if we can invest in a laser light show or something that could be programmable and that doesn't necessarily risk, put the community at risk. I think that would be kind of a neat thing to check out. But I, I'm, I'm open to hearing about the, the idea of banning the sale of fireworks in our community and banning the use of it. I don't, I don't think we need it.
Two parts of that I want to speak to is the, the fun stuff is substantially illegal in Oregon, right? To get the fun stuff, you go off, out of Oregon, either to a tribal land or state of Washington or some faraway place. So that, just that's one part of what we're talking about. And also, you know, drone shows increasingly a, a thing, but quite, quite a budget thing. And City Hood River spends no money on the sandbar show, right? That's private fundraising. And I don't think that we're talking about banning that.
I did not put that as part of your conversation here. This is about consumer use, consumer sale and use of fireworks.
Doug.
Probably a question for Chris. So I, I think, I think Dan has advised this in the past. We could, we could quite easily ban the use of personal fireworks. However, the sale of personal fireworks is a whole nother thing entirely. So is, is, is that difficult for us to be able to enforce legally the sale of fireworks inside the city of Hood River?
It, it is, he's right. The, you have to get a license to sell fireworks and that comes from the state fire marshal. And so if this fire marshal chooses to issue a license to someone for the sale of fireworks, you can't really prohibit that. You can prohibit the use of them, but the sale of them is already regulated by the state.
Thank you. I, I'm going to suggest that we, if we, if we're talking about anything, it's the use, because that's within our purview. The sale, I think, is, is clear that we, we have, it's not really our decision to make that. I just wanted to make that point. I, I guess while I have the mic as well, I also am not interested in every single year trying to, you know, you could see here, we've got, you know, what, four different times recently that we've done this. Three different times in recent, you know, 2021, 2023, 2024. Seem to be in a red flag warning every single one of these years. If anything, it would almost be the opposite, that we'd want to put out several days before in consult with the fire marshal, in consult with a fire chief, the, the police department, et cetera, you know, is, is this a good year to do this? Would be the exception. I, I'm more in favor of just banning the, the use of personal fireworks and directing people down to waterfront where it's done by professionals in a safe environment where there's not, you know, roofs and trees and all these things to catch on fire.
So mechanically, that would be, what, what date do you like, July? June 15th? First June, like New Year's? I feel kind of differently about New Year's. There's been some years of big New Year's banging. Amanda.
I feel like conflicted about this, like I feel like it's this kind of like a show anyway, or like a statement that the city doesn't approve of these things because legally, what's actually allowed is sparklers and little twirly on the ground things, right? What we, and I don't think most people probably have a big issue with that. What we have big issues with is the ones that go into the air and those aren't technically legal anyway, they're already banned, right? So like, to me, this is just kind of like, what are we doing? You know, are we just making a statement that we don't approve of fireworks? Are we enforcing like, we're, you know, like you guys have a limited crew. You can't track down every person who's shooting off a firework on the 4th of July, you know, like, I don't know, I would like to hear from Neil about like what, how that works on the 4th of July or surrounding dates? And do you go looking for people and is there ticketing?
All right, we're dragging you up, chief.
Well, I'm not the only one that can enforce this. Fire department can as well, based on the ordinance, so.
And the fire chief is also on, we need to call on him.
Um, we're very reactive. This is the sad part about this is a lot of times when we do respond with the years that we have, people that's banned as last year, use go to a location where it's happening, they're legal ones. There are situations where there are eight, nine, 10-year-old kids, you know? You do your best to say, hey, you can't do that. Quit doing it. It's all reactive, it's really what it is. Banning fireworks in our community, I'll just be honest, as we know, isn't going to prevent it. Just like the mayor stated, we get the boomers every year throughout the year that aren't legal to be in the state of Oregon anyways, and it occurs. So again, you can say they're banned, but realistically, you're going to get the illegal ones in the community no matter what. So it's, it's difficult to, to enforce, just because a lot of times, like you say, it's location. The assumption it's at 12th and Taylor or something like that, you get up there, everybody runs by the time you get there anyways and it's already shot and, you know, blown up, so.
I guess my feeling is, of course, we're not going to get a hundred percent compliance, but some people are going to, oh, not allowed, I'm not going to do it. So I, I like, I like that, you know, of, of course, tooth comb catches a lot of, catches a lot of people.
But then to that, are we going, I mean, obviously, we're not even enforcing the big ones. So like, even though we're banning sparklers, or nobody's going to get in trouble for having a sparkler, right? Like.
Well, I mean, given the situation, if you don't run, chiefs, people are going to come and say, hey, you're not supposed to do that because it's fire summer, it's fire season. The president would be like, maybe the person's like, oh yeah, right, okay, I didn't know.
Realistic of the sparklers, the little twirly twirls, it's, it's fire. When we have a dry summer weather and those go in the grass, it'll catch fire, no different than a firecracker.
Sure.
Just one explodes, which they're concerned in the Oregon and such fingers and stuff like that, the safety part of it. But they'll both create fire in a grassy area.
Well, I guess I'm fine with banning them. I just, I don't know that it's going to be very effective besides just making a statement, so.
So I think it says develop the motion in the evening if we want to. We want to do something, Doug, you seem the closest to.
Yeah, no, I, I was just, if, if Leonard is on, does Leonard have any insight to offer?
Let's see, here he is.
There he is. Hey, chief.
Thank you, chief.
Hello, council and mayor. I think Neil summed it up perfectly. I think our problem is going to be enforcement. What's already illegal is already illegal in the state of Oregon and obviously illegal in the city. Enforcement's almost impossible. So you can make the rule. And I would say our boundaries between the city and the county, you know, not everybody knows they're in the city or the county. So then you have someone across the street that's in the city and someone across the street that's in the county. And, you know, that is just going to cause even more friction. So you have the enforcement, then you have the confiscation. And then what do you do with it? Then you have the disposal. It just, there's a lot more logistical issues than just the simple banning of fireworks. Just something to consider.
Thanks, chief.
So currently, the discharge of consumer fireworks is allowed only from November 14th to July 14th. As if we're going to craft a motion here, I suggest it would be to allow it from November 14th, as, as mentioned, mayor. What date would be sufficient within fire season before July 14th? I think it's kind of the question.
For the sake of trial balloon of June 1st, how about? How do people, how does June 1st strike people?
So may I reword that you're looking to allow fireworks from November 14th to June 1st?
Right, because the discharge of consumer fireworks is allowed only from November 14th to July 14th.
Right, so you're looking to just tighten that window.
Correct, but we wouldn't want to put it to July 3rd because fire danger before July 3rd. So.
My reaction is June 1st seems kind of early. Anna.
I, I can appreciate, I have a couple of thoughts on that. I think, you know, sometimes we get dry winters too, like this hasn't been a particularly wet winter, I don't feel like. And I don't know, I, I don't, I don't have a super strong opinion about this either way. But on the enforcement side of it, one of the things that I think might be a deterrent is if it, if the use of personal fireworks is not allowed within our city and it actually does occur and a fire event is, is, happens because of it. And you can trace that back toward to this person used an illegal firework during a time when they weren't allowed to do so. That could change their liability for it. I don't know if that's true, Chris, maybe you can tell me if, if that's accurate or not. But I think that that could be a deterrent in and of itself of, you know, responsible adults that are supervising their children or, or just playing with fireworks themselves might reconsider using those if, if they do actually cause, cause some kind of, you know, event. So I don't know.
Right, I think there are two factors there. One could be, you could be, you know, civilly liable for the, you know, if you burn somebody else's house down, right? And then also the cost of fire suppression can be passed on to the person if it can be traced back.
I had a thought about time, place and manner, it's kind of the way I look at this.
Yep.
And Leonard, if you could come on, I think it's maybe a point that we banned burn ban within the county as far as 55 gallon or burn bans, people that burn their garbage. burn ban within the county as far as 55 gallon or burn bans, people that burn their garbage or whatever at home. I don't know if that could play a part in this, like when the county or the state says burn ban, the city will just follow suit on that. And that is flexible just because, but it's also dictated on weather, you know, and climate. So it's, I don't know how viable that is, viable, Leonard, as far as the burn ban process in the state.
Yeah, most of that's done through, in the county, at least in Hood River County for blight and for orchidus. So it's not necessarily the bird barrel, though they're tied together. The difference is, is bird barrels are supposed to have spark screens. So, you know, unless things are flying 12 feet out of a burn barrel, you know, that, I'll say that's the concern is you just have something that's not controlled, being lit off and flying in any direction. And as well as what was mentioned, depending on the, the grass, how dry that is. And they, it can start fire in the winter for sure. We've had a few of those over the winter in the county, some small grass fires, which seems kind of crazy. But we did have a dry winter up until just recently, so. I'll say closer rated, Neil, but not quite the same.
But what I was.
I do like the idea.
What I was thinking, when you're looking at time, place and manner, the time, the state says you no longer can burn from this date to this date. And then I, I have the county says at the state level, and then I have to get a burn permit from my local fire department, Westside or White Spire District. And they say you can start burning this date.
Yeah, and that's.
I was just thinking regulatory as far as, instead of giving a time, you could use the same burn bans that our county uses. But this is an idea.
And that would be. Do you have a hand up, Chris?
No.
Curse, we have a cursor on Chris. Thanks, Chief, thanks, both Chiefs. Amanda.
I guess I'm leaning towards if we're going to do a ban year round, like, why pick random dates that we don't? It's a date, it doesn't give you any information about those conditions of, you know, trees and houses. That's my.
I think my comment on that is that I kind of like New Year's Eve fireworks, because it makes sense.
Do you like your neighbors doing New Year's Eve fireworks, or do you like it when they do it down there?
I'm okay with neighbors. I, I, I'm not enthusiastic about banning fireworks on New Year's Eve because it seems like the fire danger is at a minimum at that time.
The city of White Salmon used to limit only to Fourth of July and New Year's, and they amended, I think, last year, maybe 2023, to only allow on New Year's. That's the only day, and it's from like 6:00 PM to 1:00 AM.
But they have an 18 hour permitted window.
They have like a nine hour window, yeah, it's really small.
Doug, Grant, Grant, I have not heard from Grant, yes.
That's okay. From me all the time. I agree with Councilor Giggie that we, if, if we're entertaining banning them all year round, should be entertained because we don't control the weather, like this winter is particularly dry. We may have a dry spring, we may not. And so to set arbitrary dates when we don't know what the weather is, artificially gates when or when not those, those flames are allowed. And so I agree with, if we're going to entertain banning flames from fireworks, just to do it. There are, if, if the concern is sparklers or allowing kids to have sparklers, there are alternatives out there called cold sparklers, where kids can still have sparklers that don't have flame. So they can still have sparklers, and they're popular at weddings. A lot of venues do not allow sparklers at their venues for that exact purpose. So they don't start fires, they're called cold sparklers. So kids can still have sparklers, but cold sparklers. So there, there are other options available where you can still have the sparkle and the festivities of Fourth of July in your hands or whatnot without open flame or a threat of starting a fire. And I agree with Councilor Cathlery about the possibility of protecting neighbors and not necessarily starting fires in Indian Creek, for example, which we heard about recently, potentially. Which is another concern that our neighbors have brought, brought to us not that long ago. So. That's where I'm at.
Guess I'm odd man out here. I have a hard time philosophically cramping people's style on Fourth, Fourth of July, especially because of the points that were raised here about the, the near impossibility of enforcing the, enforcing this. I did like the, which is what I talked about with Abigail. Our conversation about it a while back is tying it to the, the burn ban. I understand that doesn't solve the problem with local entities that fundraise and, you know, do these sort of things. But to me, tying it to, I mean, I, I would argue that weather does make, and fire danger does make a difference as we have burn bans and stuff like that. I just understand that doesn't necessarily help your glacier situation that you encountered two years ago. I don't know, I, I personally kind of feel like, if anything, this doesn't really solve a whole lot and kind of makes the city look a little bad and not, not great for good vibes in the community. But I seem to be in the minority here, so.
Excellent.
Maybe I can be the person that gets to vote nay while it comfortably passes, I don't know.
Amanda.
I don't know, I, I feel like I hear a lot from community over the past few years about people not liking fireworks. Like, their neighbors are setting them off, it's disruptive to their pets, it's disruptive to them. I don't know if we really would be the bad guy. Like, I mean, there could be a very even number split of people who are all for fireworks and people who absolutely hate them. So, I don't know.
Yeah, and for the record, I don't launch fireworks myself, and I get annoyed when my neighbors do it. I get annoyed when my neighbors do a lot of things. You know? But, yeah, I don't know, philosophically, this is a little bit challenging for me to just be like, nope, we're done.
Doug.
I, I mean, I'm, I'm, I understand your point. I think a lot of countries, White Salmon, not being a country, but that, that philosophy of, just, you know, don't, clear, clear for the record, the Republic of White Salmon. I mean, I, I think there, that sort of window, I'd be, if, if others felt that way as well, I, I could see my way to compromise that, but I'm leaning towards outright ban, unless others feel strongly about how the mayor said, New Year's Eve.
So I got, I got two votes for the Amanda idea of like, nope, never. So we got three votes for the Amanda idea. Four votes makes a yes, as we've learned at civics.
And the other option is to ban or only allow on New Year's Eve? Or are we shortening the window?
What, at, what, once upon a time, there was the, the brief Blackburn idea of November 14th to June 1st. Right, that's, that would be changing our window by five weeks right now. Anna.
I like the White Salmon, White Salmon, the People's Republic of White Salmon's idea. I think that they do a good job.
On the New Year's Eve.
There, yeah, I mean, I think the New Year's Eve, what was it, did you say?
I don't think, but I think it was 6:00 PM to 1:00 AM.
6:00 PM to 1:00 PM, or 1:00 AM on New Year's Eve.
Seven hour window.
That's a bad idea, you know, subject to whether, you know, weather permitting, but.
I got two yeses on the, on the Kiefler idea.
I'll go with the Kiefler.
All right, that's four votes for Kiefler. All right, so will you prepare a thing for us?
Yep, so that's given me a direction, I'll either work with Chris or with Ian. We will prepare an ordinance or we'll change the ordinance with new language that reflects that and bring that to you at a future meeting with a public hearing.
I just returned from Amsterdam a few weeks ago. They spent $118 million on fireworks on New Year's Eve. They're like down with it on New Year's Eve.
I want for the record, I do not have that kind of budget.
Okay, thank you all, good work. That takes us to city manager comments.
I don't have any particular comments for you. I'm hoping that Councilperson will speak about the Region One Act meeting. And then also, Councilor Rivera, if you can just talk about, McCack is doing some emergency cold weather stuff. Beyond that, I don't have any updates for you.
Great, so I'm going to take executive action and merge committee reports and council comments. So Gladys, anything for us from your committee or your docket?
Yeah, I have an update really quick. So due to cold weather, the emergency shelter at the Gloria Center is open. It's located in the Dows, they have many transportation options available for folks. McCack is looking for donations, any supplies. McCack.com/donate. You can.
Gladys, I'm sorry, just, just to clarify, Gladys, is that, that, the way I've read about it and the way you just said it, like, two weeks ago, was it not open?
It was, but there are specific hours, like guests and takes are from four to eight, and then they're going to be from nine to seven. But it is provided 24 hours a day where, for the most part, it is on like limited hours.
Great, thank you.
Just going through my document here. And then the other piece that I wanted to add was that at the last meeting, I had mentioned that Kenny had stepped down as Executive Director. The board has hired Leslie Narimore as the new interim Executive Director. She started at WAGAP, at the Washington Gorge Action Programs, where she worked there in 2013. And I believe she was, she was going to move and therefore step down in her role. So she does have experience leading a large organization that is providing a variety of wraparound services. So there is a press release, I believe most of you have received an email from Sarah Kellums that have gone over both items, the Leslie being hired and the emergency shelter at the Gloria Center. Happy to take any questions.
Amanda.
I don't really have anything, I still need to connect with the library person if we have one.
I heard from the director of the library, Rachel Fox, that they would be discussing and deciding at their next meeting. And I think it's scheduled for either February 18th or 19th.
In my energy thing, I think I have a meeting next week to kind of get introduced to all that, so.
Thanks, Grant.
Sure, I look forward to everybody supporting Lions fireworks to make it a giant show in the future, a massive giant show, because that will be the consequence of this, yay. Region, Region One Act, the illustrious Will Norris and I did a presentation. And I say illustrious because we're the last people to present, and so they save the best for last, not me, Will. And so we shared our proposed interjurisdictional transfer. It's an informational presentation with the Regional One Act. Ryan was there from ODOT, a bunch of people were there, presented the concept and generally received favorable feedback from everyone, everyone was supportive and thumbs up and yay. So you can watch that presentation if you wish, it's last 15 minutes or so of the meeting. Was there anything else from that that was important?
No, I, I watched it after the fact, and you've got excellent comments from the ODOT staff that were there and, and other folks, so nice work, thank you for doing that. I will add to that, that I believe Will and possibly you will be at the county meeting next week. Yeah, next week, again, to just introduce the county commissioners to the concept of the jurisdictional transfer, or at least keep them updated, and then kind of ask for their support, or like, can we use their logo on our materials and stuff?
And we might, we, Will, might use the same presentation, so we missed it the first time. Might want to go, we can go watch it again if you really, if you really want to.
And forgive me if you've already reported on this, Grant, you went to Salem. And this is, anything else from that city day or whatever it's called?
For the same purpose, yeah. Met with a number of people, elected representatives, I have a list. Oh, Senator Gorsuch, Representative Bowman, our, our representative Helfrich, Chair McLean, Rep Sanchez, and Senator Bonham. Met with all them about our interjurisdictional transfer. And, yeah, response was favorable, and so hopefully we make progress on it. Can't really come down, be like, oh, yay, everybody's going to sign off on things because they have their work to do. But, yeah, everyone was receptive to the idea. Representative or leader, leader, yes, Leader Bowman was the one who actually conceptually, I believe, spearheaded the interjurisdictional transfer effort at Salem, the whole, the whole project. And so he was instrumental in creating it at the state level. And so it was nice to have a, a meeting with him and go through that entire program.
Thank you.
And then the other bit of information that, and I'm going to save it for you. Yeah, so more to come from someone else later, okay, that's it for me.
Doug. I have no committee reports to mention. I guess council comments, just applaud the Hood River Latino Network for their peaceful protests that they were able to organize last week. And I thought it demonstrated a, a lot about this community. So thank, thank you, Hood River Latino Network for doing that. Also, this is going to seem trite, but it's not. Saw that, you know, Gray Sue's China Gorge is closing after 50 years. And my heart sank a little bit just because it's one of those places where the community gathers. You know, they have that boardroom there that I've seen used by a lot of local businesses and everything. And I just think, you know, well, thank you for Gray Sue and China Gorge for, you know, being around for 50 years, humongous achievement. But, you know, just as we, as we keep doing business and understanding, you know, if we're going to make considerations about land use and changes, and, you know, we, before we've talked about, you know, having a, a community element to what's done there, I think we have to keep that mission pretty, pretty solid because there's, there's less and less gathering spaces for local people in the community. So sad to see that one go. Yeah, thank you.
I just got back from vacation, so I owe an email to Megan Ramey to connect about CAT stuff. Columbia Gorge, Area Transit, really, forgot we're saying the acronyms here. But they have a board meeting, not this Wednesday, but next Wednesday.
Thank you. Anna.
I don't have any comments to report except for Grant and I are pulling a switcheroo, we ran it by Abigail. Grant has a, a soft spot for parks and wanted to work with them, and I was happy to switch. So I'll, I'll do the, I will be the representative and then reach out to the Columbia Gorge Community College folks. And Grant will be reaching out to the, I think it's the chair of the Parks and Rec. So if it's okay with everybody, we're just going to do a whole switcheroo.
If, if I could add to that, I sent a note to their directors, so President Kenny Lawson and Director Mark Hickoff from the Parks District. And then I ran into Christie, the Chair of the Parks District Board at a conference this weekend, and so I gave her a heads up as well. So the only person who doesn't know is the Community College person.
Okay.
And you've got her information.
Yes, and I just want to say that for the record, I am still a huge supporter of the parks and that. I will, you know, be happy to advocate for them in any way that is, is in any way I can, that's it.
I have nothing. We got some public testimony about the landscaping contract. Remind us when we're going to see that topic again, Abigail.
Thank you, Mayor. Right now, I have it scheduled for the February 24th meeting. I know that Adam has already met with the person, from representative from Crystal Greens, about just what the options might be, so. I anticipate bringing it back to you in two weeks, but we'll see.
Amanda.
I just saw it right before the meeting, but the public comment that was going to be an email, and it raises a lot of good questions, so if that could be kind of incorporated into the conversation and bringing it back to us too, that would be great.
I know Jackie collected those today and shared them with Adam, so he's got those as well. Thank you.
Anything else for the good of the order that I'm overlooking? We are adjourned.
Thank you all. Thank you, Chris, for joining our journey.